Good evening. If we can have another sort of seat, please? I know there's a few people still checking in, so we're gonna give it a few minutes. And my voice is probably gonna go up and down because I don't understand this microphone. Anyhow, so most of you who've come to town meeting are not used to saying, "He's standing here," and I've never stood here, so usually I sit there and usually can't see me. Our town moderator has had a family emergency going on. He apologizes for not being here because he says he's leaving us in good hands. So they're not gonna be lying to him, so I'm just here as the opening ceremony. But we'll give it a couple of minutes. I think we still have a few people checking in. So we're gonna open the meeting, call the meeting supporter. There is a quorum present, and meeting warrant was posted properly according to statute of law. So since the moderator is absent, the first order of business is to elect a ballot, a temporary moderator pursuant to general law, chapter 39, section 14. The temporary moderator will preside over this town meeting. Okay, before I get to that, I know I just started that, but I'm gonna read the visitor list because that's kind of important. So we have Don Anderson, Anderson, who's the Grafton Town Moderator; Dennis Westgate, DPW Director; Sue Brower, the Administrative Assistant for Town Manager; Executive Assistant to Looping; Mike Antonello, Planner/Planers Director; Jessica Gomez, Treasurer; Jared Collins, APKP Law; Colin Roy from Grafton; I'm not sure the name of this sir. Sandley? Anita Sandberg, oh maybe it's Sandberg, sorry, I apologize. Ken Costo, the Treasurer; Matthew Buck, Police Director; Peter McGowan, our Infru Police Chief; and Tanya Paparazzo from the Elder Social Services Department.
Who will be our moderator?
Thank you. Okay, so now we will go back to the business of appointing a temporary town moderator. My understanding that Don Anderson, who's the Grafton Town Moderator, has graciously offered to perform the duties as the moderator tonight. And Don is here, present, she was the first name on our visitor list. Additionally, should be aware that in elections, the person receiving majority of votes of those present in voting is declared the winner. Accordingly, there is only one person nominated tonight. Only one vote will be required to elect temporary moderators. Do I have a nomination for Don Anderson to act as temporary moderator for the purposes of this meeting?
Madam Town Corr, could I nominate Don Anderson to be the temporary moderator for this meeting?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, are there any additional nominations? Okay, hearing none, nominations are closed, saying my gavel. Further hearing, no objections, I declare that Don Anderson is the sole nominee for the position of temporary moderator for this meeting. Do I hear a motion at the Chair of the Select Board to cast one vote for Don Anderson? So the Chair of the Select Board gets to cast one vote for this one. She's the nominated, our only nominee. Can I hear a still move?
Still move. Second.
Thank you. I will ask you to vote for the motion of the Chair of the Select Board to cast one ballot. We will use a show of hands. If the vote is close, meaning it's apparent to me that there are no significant number of no votes, then we will have a counted vote. If there appears to be a clear majority, however, I will simply play up a vote. So I know I said show of hands. We're gonna hold up our favorite green cards if you're in favor of the Select Chair of the Select Board casting their one ballot. All those in favor? Okay, all those opposed? Put it on hand. All right, if we're in by majority or unanimously by hand, then you get to cast your vote.
I, Laura Head, Select Board Chair, vote to elect Don Anderson as temporary town moderator.
Thank you. Get the official vote card. All right, so we'll have Don come up, do the go to the office with her, and hand the gavel and the microphone over to the line. Right, congratulations. Don Anderson from Grafton, all right. If I raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and harshly discharge and perform all the duties that come upon you as a temporary moderator for this special town meeting held November 12, 2024, in accordance with the bylaws of the town and the laws of the Commonwealth? Well, thank you for nimblingness of service. I'm gonna give you the gavel.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Turn it off. Okay, how about now? Good? How's that? Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Upton Special Town Meeting. As you said, my name is Don Anderson. I am the moderator for the Town of Grafton, and tonight I am honored to serve as the temporary moderator for the Town of Upton. I respectfully ask that I be addressed as Madam Moderator. I invite the Chair of the Select Board to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Everybody raise your right hand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, invincible, liberating, and just as strong.
Thank you. A few reminders, these are as much for me as they are for you. If you would like to speak on a question or matter in debate, proceed to the microphone in the front. Please remember to state your full name and address each time that you speak. Please speak closely and clearly into the microphone so everyone can hear you. A quick reminder that anyone who wishes to question another must direct all their questions through the moderator. Tonight we'll be using red and green cards for the determination of vote. Green card is for yes, a red card is for no. And I'm just gonna jump right in. Article one.
Article one. I move that town vote to appropriate the sum of $50.00 from the Police Department's FY 2025 appropriation Police Expense Account to pay a FY 2023 bill from T-Mobile and to appropriate the sum of $79.82 from the Management Information Systems FY 2025 Appropriation Management Information Systems Expense Account to pay prior year bills from FY 2017 through FY 2023.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes, sir. Finance Committee.
Paul Farrey, 29 Tastree, the Co-Chair of the Finance Committee. Finance Committee recommend favorable action.
Any other discussion on the article, on the motion? Hearing none. This motion requires a nine-tenth vote. All those in favor, raise your green card. All those opposed, raise the red card. I declare the motion has carried by the required nine-tenths majority. Article two.
I move that town vote to fund and implement the cost items for the first fiscal years of the collective bargaining agreements the town has with Teamster's Local 170. Such agreements for a term beginning July 1, 2024, and ending on June 30, 2027, by appropriating a total amount of $96,310.00 as follows. Transfer the sum of $20,000 from FY 2025 Appropriation Personnel Wages Account to DPW Parks, Forestry, and Cemetery Budget appropriated under Article 3 of the May 2, 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Raise and appropriate the sum of $3,374 to the DPW Parks, Forestry, and Cemetery Budget appropriated under Article 3 of the May 2, 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Raise and appropriate the sum of $1,617 to the Town Public Buildings Budget appropriated under Article 3 of the May 2, 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Raise and appropriate the sum of $38,590 to the Department of Public Works Budget appropriated under Article 3 of the May 2, 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Raise and appropriate the sum of $750 to the Department of Public Works Highway Construction Maintenance Budget appropriated under Article 3 of the May 2, 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Increase the Water Enterprise Budget voted under Article 4 of the May 2, 2024 Annual Town Meeting by $16,395 which shall be funded by water retained earnings and increase the wastewater enterprise budget voted under Article 5 of the May 2, 2024 Annual Town Meeting by $15,584 which shall be funded by wastewater retained earnings.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Favorable action, Madam Moderator.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Favorable.
Favorable, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, raise your red card. I declare the motion carried by majority. Article three.
Article three. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $45,432.00 to fund the approved compensation plan for various non-union municipal employees for FY 2025.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Favorable action, Madam Moderator.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, raise the red card. I declare the motion carried by majority. Article four.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,796.00 to be used as the town's match in the purchase and conversion of streetlights to LED fixtures, including all expenses incidental and related thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Favorable action, Madam Moderator.
Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, raise the red card. I declare the motion carried by majority. Article five.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $114,582.00 from free cash to upgrade the Police Department's radio system infrastructure by replacing current repeaters and installing repeaters of two new sites, Pear Street Water Tank Tower and Hope Dale Water Tank Tower, including all expenses incidental and related thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Favorable action, Madam Moderator.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your red card. Green card? Sorry. I was looking at the red exit sign instead of the white. All those opposed, raise the red card. Thank you. I declare the motion carried by majority. Article six has been withdrawn. Article seven?
I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $10,953.00 from free cash to be used to purchase and put a replacement drone system to be used by the Upton Police Department, including all expenses incidentals and related thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Favorable action, Madam Moderator.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, raise your red card. I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article eight.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $19,451.00 from free cash to be used to replace non-serviceable control valves and related parts on the Upton Fire Department's Engine 3, including all expenses incidental and related thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Favorable, Madam Moderator.
Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, I declare the motion carried by the required majority.
I move that the town vote to amend the vote taken under Article seven of the November 13, 2018 Special Town Meeting, which authorized funding for roof repairs at the Upton Fire Station, to use the sum of $26,375.00 of the remaining funds to repair flooring in the first-floor lobby and to install UV protective film to eliminate UV damage to the lobby, office space, EOC, and back stairway, including all expenses incidental and related thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Favorable, Madam Moderator.
Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, raise the red card. I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article 10.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $100,000.00 from free cash to fund the resurfacing and reconfiguration of the Town Hall parking lot, including all expenses incidental and related thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Favorable action, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Any discussion on this motion?
Mr. Henderson, 20 Brook Street.
Come a little closer. No?
That's the light on, Dick. It's not me. How about now?
There we go.
My question is, will this repair fix the granite head wall that is falling in on Route 140 drainage system?
For the record, Joe Layton, Town Manager, note that is outside the scope of this project.
So about a year and a half ago, I noticed the area between the Warren Street and United Parish Church Street, that the granite curve on the inflow had fallen in and blocked a portion of the inflow. Also, when the town did the tip program on High Street, all the drainage now from High Street, Prattdale, all that area now comes down across School Street, across Church Street, into this drain. I met with town officials, I discussed with town officials. I indicated that there would be flooding here, and everybody agreed with me, particularly one town official who had seen it before. The town DPW Director went to the Conservation Commission, got permission to remove a small portion of the debris that had clogged in there, and that was done. We had heavy rain just about a year ago. That COVID got overrun, filled up, caused flooding in, I think, Three Church Street, caused flooding in United Parish. I pumped there for eight hours with my own pump and the fire department pump because the water table came up. If anybody wants to get out and look at the area, look from the Congregational Church or the United Parish, I apologize, and you'll see how high the water is. And it's because the granite has plugged the inflow. So what does the water mean coming from High Street? Normally you do an H&amp;H study when you're gonna increase the flow because you don't want to increase the flow of water coming down into a smaller outflow, inflow, I'm sorry. And this is what's happened. So that was just a small rainstorm that we had. I can't imagine what's gonna happen in Upton Center if we have a large rainfall. If we're spending $100,000 here, $16,666 per parking lot, I think we could spend $4,000 or $5,000 to fix the granite curve and reduce the possibility of having this area flood. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, raise a red card. I declare the motion carried by the majority required. Article 11.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $47,347.00 from free cash to be used for the refurbishment and or installation of a new community message board with LED panel, including all expenses incidentals and related thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Favorable action, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion? Yes, sir.
Dave Ross, 23 Plumlee Road. Can I ask where this sign is located?
This is to replace the existing sign that the Men's Club graciously donated a little over 20 years ago.
So in front of Town Hall or right next to Town Hall?
Yes, we've checked and it will not interfere with the State's tip project.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that. We're spending a lot of time and money revitalizing downtown. We wanted to have that quaint, historic New England downtown feel, and we're gonna put a big lighted sign in the center of downtown. I know everything's gone up in cost, but $47,000 for a lighted sign seems a lot of money. Just my thoughts.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise a green card. All those opposed, raise a red card. I declare the motion is defeated by the required majority. Article 12.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $95,000.00 from wastewater retained earnings for the purpose of complying with the DEP's requirements and the latest NPDES permit associated with updating the Upton Wastewater Treatment Plant's Operation and Maintenance Manual and developing a Capacity Management Operations Manual for the entire system, including all infrastructures and pump stations, including all costs incidental and related thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Favorable, Madam. Moderator.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise a green card. All those opposed, please raise a red card. I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article 13.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $31,000.00 from wastewater retained earnings and transfer the sum of $31,000... $31,000.00 from wastewater retained earnings for a total of $2,000... $62,000.00 for the purpose of funding the remaining design permitting costs and fees associated with the expansion of water and wastewater infrastructures on Little Street, including all costs incidental and related thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Favorable, Madam. Favorable action, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise a green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Please try not to stack your cards in front of each other because I can see both red and green in a couple of spots. I assumed the one in the front is what you wanted, but just to be sure.
Article 14. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $23,000... $23,000.00 from free cash to be used to retain professional services for lighting and streetscape design in support of the ongoing design of improvements along Route 140 in Upton, including all expenses incidental and related thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Favorable action, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion?
David Brooks, 3 Grand Reis, Madam Moderator, through you. May I ask the Select Board if when the professional designers come up with a design, you have all the meetings to discuss, to allow us to discuss it?
Joe, you wanna answer? I'm sorry, David, I didn't just have a question. Yes, I would anticipate that the Select Board will be holding public meetings to solicit public input and to get ideas and confirm some of the design aesthetics that would then move forward to be coordinated with the State on their tip project.
Ed Phillips, 35 Old Drive. Madam Moderator, this article was requested strongly by the Upton Historical Commission as part of the anticipation of the upcoming work body reconstruction and tip project now in the next two or three years so that we can try to implement some historical and landscape artifacts to make the downtown of Upton look a little more historical than it does right now.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise a green card. All those opposed, please raise a red card. I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article 15. Will the representative from the Green Designation Committee please come forth?
I'm Tom Cross, 23 Plumlee Road. On behalf of the Green Designation Community Committee, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,500.00 for the purpose of printing and mailing a townwide notice of the pilot comp posting program, including all expenses incidental and related thereto.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
By the majority vote, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Madam Moderator, I was in a long vote on the Finance Committee, and I looked at this simply one way. Whoever's going to do this comp posting is gonna make money on it. Otherwise, they wouldn't be doing it. Why are we paying to advertise so somebody else can make money?
Tom Cross, 23 Plumlee Road. So there's a couple of reasons why we would do this. The mailer is the only way to ensure that all residents have access to the information about this program. This program is optional, it's not required. All the towns around us are doing it, including Grafton, Westboro, Hawkington. You'll see their little compasting bins on the side of the road. There's been a lot of interest in this. We have tried free information... We have tried free information on Facebook. We sent out newsletters, information through the newsletters at the schools, and we are just finding we're not getting to people enough. People do not have to participate in this. The intention is for this program to successfully reduce our waste tonnage, which directly decreases our sanitation operation budget, which would be a savings of far more than fifteen hundred dollars. So this benefits residents in the long run. We're not trying to benefit a corporation. There is no conflict of interest on the Green Designation Committee. Just so that you're aware, the statement from the EPA's website is that the EPA estimates that in 2018 in the U.S., more food reed landfills and combustion facilities than any other single material in our everyday trash. And that probably goes for Upton, too. So when we think about how much we could potentially take out of our tonnage and our waste by having a composting program, that would result in savings to the town. Also, just so that you're aware, we figured out what sort of the, how much tonnage we would need to divert in order to offset this fifteen hundred dollars, which is about eighteen point eight tons, which is about one point five percent of the total annual tonnage that we create. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this motion?
Madam Moderator, I just repeat my point. I don't disagree with what the lady said regarding reducing your waste. You want to reduce waste from food waste, I'd start with the schools, really, because it's a sin for what the schools throw away. But I still come back to what I, my original premise. Somebody is making money on this deal. Why are we paying to advertise for them? If somebody wants to bid on it, let them do the mailing.
I have a question for Dawn Cathy Robertson, fifty-ninth Fowler Street. I could shame on me, I should know the answer to this. I've been reading it on the Sustainable Upton website. But is there a cost to residents to have their compost picked up on a regular basis or is, would that be at no cost?
I will ask the presenter. I do know the answer.
So the answer to the question is that, yes, residents who opt into this program pay. They pay eighty-nine ninety-nine for six months, and it's picked up every other week. They get a bag of compost in the spring. Families have reached out to me and have said, you know, that's steep for us right now. We have suggested that maybe they share, neighbor to neighbor, they can split the cost and share it then, that that's an option. But people are not required to do this. I think that's important to remember. I totally agree with the Finance Committee Chair that schools are important. We actually have an ongoing conversation around that. However, the schools are more tricky in terms of the education. But should this fail tonight, which I think if it doesn't, that will be certainly a next step because we have resolved in bringing this to town.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise a green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. I wish I had thought this before. I'm going to need to do a standing vote. Now I have a volunteer to help count. Okay, all right. So will all those in favor please stand and allow for our meeting to... You can find it. Okay. Please be seated. And all those opposed, please stand. Thank you for your patience. I declare the motion has carried. Eighty-six, yes. Forty, no. Article fifteen.
I move that the town vote to authorize...
Article sixteen.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to accept on behalf of the town of Upton, a monetary donation from the Harvey J. Trask Trust to be used in accordance with the Harvey J. Trask Trust Agreement Clause eleven.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee?
No monetary expense right now, Madam Moderator, but the Finance Committee did vote to ask to recommend favorable action.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, raise your red card. I declare the motion has carried by majority. Article seventeen.
I move that the town vote to approve Article seventeen as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Lori Wood, Seventh Allison Street. Could someone explain this to us?
Madam Moderator, Article seventeen proposes to discontinue a rectangular piece of Stoddard Street adjacent to the front yard of Twelve Stoddard Street. You can see an image on the screen from our assessor's maps. And then to convey said parcel to the owners of the current property. The property owners of Twelve Stoddard will be responsible for all costs associated with discontinuance and conveyance.
Bill Andrews, eighty-four High Street. I can, I'm not speaking as a member of the zoning, I'm not speaking as a member of the zoning board. This property happened to come before us. For some reason, at some point, the town basically grabbed the land in front of this. They think it was for a super budget, never built, never used. So the town owns right up to the front steps of the building, and I think they're just looking for some relief of that. They had to come through us because they didn't meet the minimum setback requirements, which we did allow them to do.
Is there any other discussion on the motion?
Mary Lynn, sixty-sixth Olive Street. Question, did the town pay for this land when it acquired it? And if so, then the park should be selling it back to the owners?
Thank you. So for this small section, the amount of work that will be necessary for doing the engineering and working with attorneys, recording of the plans, the survey plans, going through the planning board for the A and R, those costs will all be borne by the property owner. Because there is no other beneficiary, this doesn't require any sort of bid process selling off. So and because this is a minor portion of the value, is de minimis, it's not necessary to auction this off. And with all the costs that are being borne by the property owner, there is going to be a cost that they do end up paying even if we're not realizing any sort of value back for the property. It will also increase the value of the property, so the assessment will increase by being more of a conforming lot and not being a liability to the property at Twelve Stoddard.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, raise the red card. I declare the motion carried by majority. Article eighteen.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to grant and convey easements for the purpose of locating a portion or portions of utilities, including without limitation, Title V compliant subsurface septic systems, water supply systems, and electric facilities across a public way known as Crockett Road, on such terms and conditions as the Select Board deems appropriate, and further to authorize the Select Board to enter into such agreements and execute such documents and instruments as may be necessary to effectuate the purposes of this article.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, raise your red card. I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article nineteen.
I move that the town vote pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section one B, to make the elected position of cemetery commissioner an appointed position of cemetery commissioner, and further to authorize the Select Board to provide for the appointment of such office for a term not to exceed three years unless otherwise provided by law, provided however that any such change be subject to approval by the voters of the town at the next annual town election in accordance with the provisions of General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section one B, and provided that this vote be taken at least sixty days prior to said annual town election.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, raise your red card. I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article twenty.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for special legislation amending Chapter three ninety-one of the Acts of two thousand eight entitled, "An Act Establishing the Office of Town Manager in the Town of Upton", as amended by Chapter two fifty of the Acts of twenty twenty, in the form of the proposed special act as set forth in the document dated September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, containing the full text of Article twenty, which is filed with the town clerk, provided however that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill, unless the Select Board approve amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, and provided further that the Select Board is hereby authorized to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article twenty-one.
Richard Porter, thirty-four William Street. I move that the town vote to approve Article twenty-one as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the articles? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article twenty-two.
I move that the town vote to approve Article twenty-two as printed in the warrant.
Motion made and seconded.
Madam Moderator, may I give some history on this?
Yes.
In twenty nineteen, there was a committee formed. The committee voted favorably to change to electronic voting. It was brought to town meeting in November of nineteen where the article was tabled. That means no action was taken to be brought up at a later date. This is the later date. We are moving it forward tonight. And for edification, Article twenty-three, which is the funding for this article, is being pulled and passed over. The Select Board has identified alternative funds to fund this article, so there will be no vote on that tonight. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this article?
Steve Frackerton, twenty-one Midland Lane. So first, I happen to be also the chair of the Technology Committee.
Louder, please.
Yeah, you've got to move a little closer.
Sorry. I'm also the chair of the Technology Committee, so you'd think I'd be in favor of this, but I'm not. And the reason is because I don't understand the problem that we're trying to solve. And I spent several hours going through town reports over the last twenty-five years to see if there is a problem with the way we vote. So from two thousand to two thousand twenty-four, we had a hundred and one town meetings. At those town meetings, there were an average of a hundred and fifty-eight people present, and the average meeting lasted a little under a hundred minutes. In two thousand twenty, we changed the way we vote from voice to cards, what we use now. If we add up all of those motions and the votes that we took at those hundred and one meetings, there were a little under two thousand motions. And I have all this data tabulated and is available at the town clerk if you're interested. So on those two thousand motions, sixty-nine percent were unanimous votes. Thirty-one percent were majority, either a simple majority or two-thirds majority. We had a total in twenty-five years of town meeting of thirty-six standing counts, and we've only had one since two thousand twenty, and now we had one tonight. As far as paper ballots, we've had four in the past twenty-five years, the last one being two thousand and five. So if you look at how we vote, standing counts and paper ballots accounted for only two point two percent of all the votes that we've taken. And I also found that there are two hundred and sixty towns in the state that have open town meetings, which is the kind that we have. And of those two hundred and sixty towns, about a quarter of them use electronic voting devices. If I could have the next slide. So this is just a snippet of some of the data that I've collected, and like I said, if anyone is interested, say, can get the full spreadsheet, some of the town clerk's office. If I could go to the last slide, please. So, um... The last, the next slide, please. Can't get to the next slide.
Steve? Uh, Steve, I don't have the last slide. I can pull it out of my email, though.
Okay. So what the last slide says is that essentially that our town meetings are respectful, efficient, and reasonably short. We have been voting this way in open town meeting since the town was formed in seventeen thirty-five. Voting with red and green cards is fast and accurate. Even if we do have to take a standing count like we did tonight, it took less than six minutes to do that. Voting with electronic gadgets changes the character of the town because now all of our votes have to be secret, which changes the character of the way our town meeting has been run since seventeen thirty-five. And most importantly, if we switch to using electronic voting gadgets, we lose the ability to know how our elected officials vote, whether they're in Washington, in Boston, or here in Upton. We, as the voters in the town, deserve to know how our elected officials vote on issues so when it comes time to reelect them, we can make an informed choice. So for those reasons, it seems to me that this is a solution looking for a problem that we don't have, and that's why I am opposed to changing the way we vote to using electronic gadgets. Thank you.
Marcela Spasha, two eleven North Street.
Get a little bit closer.
I have a question regarding the funding source that isn't the town. Can you tell me what that source is?
Yes, in speaking with our town accountant, there are ARCA funds left over, and we will be using ARCA funds for this.
And what are the long-term, I guess, I'm looking at maintenance costs as well as upgrading the system? I'm sure this gets, you know, the technology would change over the years. Is there any idea what the cost of that might be?
Madam Moderator, answering the question as far as long-term maintenance costs, the only sort of long-range, long-term maintenance cost is replacement of batteries. They are stated to last two to three years. Some towns have best practices of just getting a schedule of replacing every two years. There is a battery warning so that we are able to do it very easily. We'd be purchasing about five hundred, so there would be some time, but we do have programs such as volunteers and senior tax workouts that can do that. As far as ongoing costs, those costs are optional, and outside of replacing some devices, we do not anticipate any significant long-term costs.
Another question, but I... Thank you.
Mary Ellen Kennedy, twenty-two Hazel Time Road. I think this is a fabulous idea. I think it's efficient and more accurate. There have been times in the past on a voice vote that I haven't agreed with the moderator, and I think there's some discrepancy there. I think this would be a more accurate means of measuring vote. Thank you.
Diane Tieran, fifty-one Milford Street. So we all checked in tonight electronically. I don't know if anybody thought about that, but this is the way that we're all going now. We order everything online. Everything is electronic now. And unfortunately, society has changed. If I like X and you like Y, suddenly we're not supposed to be civil to each other. I'm not saying that's right, but in just today's world, and a perfect example is last week's election, electronic voting makes opinions impartial. The moderator is still vital to a town meeting. This does not take place of his or her role. I know the cards are working for some of you, but as this article says, the cards are going to go away. It's all going to go back to voice vote. And yeah, if you read the article, we can no longer use the cards. Everybody has a different voice. You may have somebody with a very soft-spoken voice, and you may have somebody that's very loud. Each vote is very important, but that doesn't mean they're going to hear everybody. What I hear in the middle of the auditorium and what the moderator may hear at the front of the stage, as the last speaker suggested, more than once I've said the same thing. I'm not sure I heard what he heard, the discontent. These devices will give you an accurate count of everybody. There is no information that is going to be on this clicker with your name or address you're assigned, a clicker when you walk in, and you'll just tabulate the number of the clicker. Nobody knows who you are, so they can't come back and say, "We know how you voted." We have a lot of new voters in town. Some of them may be too cautious to speak out loud. We're going to have a lot of young voters coming. They're going to be cautious. This will enable them to go ahead and make a vote privately. You cannot sit there and click yes twelve times. It will only record the last click that you make as soon as the moderator says the voting is closed. So it cannot be skewed, and it is not, and it's very secure. It is not connected to any kind of internet, so that there is no fear of anybody going into the, to the, excuse me, to the system. We have a real quick, quick slide presentation that we'd like to give you. It's very quick, but I'm hoping that anybody is going to agree that this is our next best plan.
Mike Marchand, twenty-one Warren Street. I'm like Steve, I don't like technology that much, but I was like, I thought it...
You've got to come a little closer.
Mike Marchand, twenty-one Warren Street. At one time, I never thought I'd own a fax machine, but today's today. Now I don't know how I live without my mom, like the rest of us, with technology. But speaking for two things, one is, as a town employee and a person who's pretty much dedicated his life to our community, sometimes when I come to these town meetings, I do not vote the way I want to vote or I sit down because I'm afraid of being singled out by people that adhere or my employers and going against them to vote. When you step into the ballot box to vote for a member of the Board of Selectors, you step in there and you vote for who you want to, and it's your private decision. Nobody else is there. Same thing like we do with the presidential election. When you go into that ballot box, it's up to you or your check office. We trust the electronic systems with that, and I am for this, whether it passes or not, so do the town meetings, whether I stand up or not, I may or may not, but this is my opinion. Thank you.
Lynn Hagerty, uh... Lynn Hagerty, item and lean, through the moderator. Could we advance this slide, please? There's a small video. It only takes one moment that you should see. Thank you.
Townvote facilitates fast, accurate, and secure voting for business meetings. Simple voting devices called clickers replace some papers or paper votes with a single click button. Votes are tabulated in real time. Instant pass fail is shown with a simple majority, two-thirds or four-fifths voting rules. Security is paramount. Townvote uses a closed proprietary RF system. No internet, no Wi-Fi, no Bluetooth, no problems. Your meeting, your results. The customizable display can show any level of detail. Show how individuals voted, show totals, show nothing. Clickers can be registered participants or distributed at random. Votes can be public or secret. Do you have a big shot at swaying the vote their way? Not anymore. Vote details can be destroyed to ensure anonymity or published for public records. Your data is always safe, secure, and in your control. Townvote, making voting better for fifty years and counting.
Any further discussion?
Hello, all. I'm Lindsay Berger of High Street. I'm a new resident in the town of Upton, and this is my first town voting ever. And I can confidently say that a great reason that we should have electronic voting is because of the ability to have privacy. I've been sitting here listening to great discussions from all, and I have chosen to be quiet on some of these items because I didn't want to go against the majority because once again, privacy is a very popular topic currently. I would also like to bring up the idea that we can also integrate the electronic voting into local programs such as in the high school, where we can use this with the students to get them involved in local student elections. And I can guarantee that there are future voters who are going to be graduating from the high school is also going to agree with they like the privacy of electronic voting as well.
Madam Moderator, may I make a comment? I didn't want to rush the microphone. My name is Laura Hab. I live at thirty-eighth Grove Street. I am speaking as an individual, not as chair of the select board. The first speaker mentioned he would like to see how every elected official votes. I would like to clarify, when I vote or anyone up on this table votes, this is our personal opinion. Acting as chair or as an elected official, we do what is best for the town. When we vote at town meeting, this is strictly our personal opinion. Thank you.
Marsha Caslowski, ten McNeely. Marsha Caslowski, ten McNeely. I agree that privacy is a big issue, and also intimidation. I don't know if you noticed, but tonight in the back, when people were doing votes, they saw lots of red cards. When we did the standing votes, a lot of people did not stand. And in the last town meeting, that was a big factor, and a lot of people had a lot to say about it after the meeting. They were very disappointed that people couldn't vote their minds. Thank you.
William Andrews, eighty-four High Street. Madam Moderator, I'd like to move the question.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to move the question. Moving the question will end all discussion on Article twenty-two. All those in favor of moving the question that requires a... Two-thirds vote, thank you. Okay. All those in favor of moving the question, please raise a green card. All those opposed? I declare the motion to move the question as carried by the required two-thirds vote. With no further discussion on the motion, all those in favor, raise a green card. Only raise a green card. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise the red card. I declare the motion as carried by the majority vote. Article twenty-three.
I, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of twenty-one thousand dollars and zero cents. Oh, I'm sorry, pass over that.
Yeah, you've got to make a motion to pass over.
I make a motion to pass over Article twenty-three.
Second.
All those, any discussion on the motion to pass over? Hearing none. All those in favor of passing over Article twenty-three, please raise a green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article twenty-four. Will a member of the planning board please come forward to make the motion?
Hi, Margaret Carroll, forty-eight Oak Drive. I move that the town vote to amend the town of Upton zoning bylaws by amending the town of Upton zoning bylaws, Section three hundred dash ten point one, definitions three hundred point three point one, table of principal uses, three hundred dash three point two, accessory uses and structures, and Section three hundred six point two, wireless data transfer facilities to regulate small wireless facilities and make related changes with additions indicated by underline and deletions indicated by strike through, and to authorize the town clerk to make any necessary non-substantive corrections, including remuneration to incorporate these changes into the zoning bylaws as printed in Article twenty-four handed out provided at town meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Madam Moderator, Mike Antonales, Director of Land Use and Inspeccional Services. I'll present on the article. This is referred to as the five G bylaw. The term small wireless facility will be used in place of five G. Small wireless facilities... Small wireless facilities are small local antennas capable of carrying low-power wireless signals, defined in detail by federal regulation which limits, places limits on size, visibility, wireless power output. This bylaw amendment is the mechanism by which small wireless may be regulated. Without the bylaw in place, the town may have less control over the installation of small wireless facilities. This bylaw provides for the ability of the planning board to adopt rules and regulations which will further regulate control for these installations. Slide 2. What is 5G? 5G stands for fifth generation and is a collection of new technologies, telecommunications methodologies, some already in use, and does not only limit small wireless facilities. Small wireless facilities are antennas which are limited in size and power and are a part of 5G. They are typically installed on roadside poles, mobile poles. 5G today typically uses existing radio cellular wavelengths. Higher wavelengths, millimeter wave, are anticipated for future high-tech purposes. What do small cell facilities do? They fill in gaps in mobile broadband service, providing community-based internet. It's a new technology in communications, meaning high capacity and instantaneous response time, which is mostly aspirational for now. So here you see, it's an example of 5G. This example is taken from Watertown. You can see that antennas are typically 20 to 40 feet up. Each antenna is limited to about three cubic feet. Equipment cabinet and power supply are limited to 28 cubic feet. Added to pre-existing poles, as shown here, but it's obviously sometimes new poles. Slide 4. So in summary, the introduction of small cell wireless into the zoning bylaw allows for the regulation of its use. Without identifying and defining small cell wireless, it cannot be regulated. More specifically, there are FCC regulations that require action by municipalities regarding telecommunications without proper policies and procedures or rules and regulations. In place, the town risks being out of compliance with those regulations. This bylaw seeks to identify the use so it can be controlled through special permit and direct the planning board to adopt new rules and regulations to further regulate the installations. And the new Section G of the existing 300-6.2 bylaws requires, will require a special permit to be granted by the planning board for any new small cell wireless on private property. It's important to remember that zoning does not apply to streets. The select board can implement similar rules and regulations. The planning board and select board have already been contacted regarding the potential for a combined of procedures and policies. And just generally, other definition changes and text changes were made in this proposed bylaw amendment to be consistent with FCC regulations.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. This does require a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, raise a red card. I declare the motion carried by the required two-thirds majority.
Speaking for the planning board, I'm Kathy Robertson, 59 Fowler Street in Upton. I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Upton zoning bylaws by amending the zoning map of Upton, Massachusetts, to add the proposed MCMOD MBTA district, being an overlay district, and to amend the Town of Upton zoning bylaws, Section 300-2.1, Establishment, Section 300-2.2, Mass, and Section 300-5.5. B parking. And to add a new section to authorize the town clerk to make any necessary non-substantive corrections, including remumbering, to incorporate these changes into the zoning bylaws and zoning map as printed in Article 24, handout provided at town meeting.
Second.
And to provide...
I'm voting for motion.
Thank you, though, Paul. And further to add a new Section K before separability within said, new Section 300-8.2 to read as follows. K Building Cap: The maximum numbers of dwelling units permitted to be constructed within the MCMOD is 215 dwelling units. This number reflects the minimum density requirement of 15 dwelling units per acre within the approximately 14.3-acre district.
Now we need the second.
Second.
Thank you.
I would read out the motion, but it's early.
And it got cut off. Yes.
Good evening. Mike Antonals again, Director of Land Use and Inspection Services. This zoning map and zoning bylaw amendment is known as the MBTA Communities Bylaw. Section 3A of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A. An MBTA community shall have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right. Signed into law, 2021, and the law applies to all 177 cities and towns that have MBTA transit stops or that border communities with transit stops. The law requires communities to adopt zoning regulations to allow for multifamily housing, which is three or more housing units in a structure, by right in one or more zoning districts. The law requires the creation of a zoning district. That is what is proposed in adoption of a new zoning district. To clarify, there is no requirement for any housing production, nor is there a building unit quota that must be obtained. Slide 2. What does this law mean for Upton? As mentioned, Upton is one of 77, 177 municipalities identified as an MBTA community per law. Upton has been defined as an adjacent small-town community. That category indicated that Upton does not have its own train stop, as was mentioned prior, it borders other towns, and has a relatively low population density of 500 people per square mile. Upton's multifamily zoning district must include enough total land to accommodate a minimum of 5% of Upton's total housing stock. That's a minimum number of 150 new housing units. And allow for a theoretical average gross density of 15 acres, 15 units per acre. So what has been happening, steps taken until now? In January of 2023, the town submitted the Required Interim Compliance Action Plan, which detailed a loose timeline of how the town intended to achieve compliance with this law. This document was received and approved by the state, which has kept the town in compliance with the new law until formal adoption of the required district. In June of 2023, the town received grant funds to hire a consultant to assist with technical assistance regarding compliance to provide an economic feasibility analysis, which I'll discuss more later. In May of 2024, economic feasibility analysis was provided and distributed to several committees for review, including the planning board. The report provided justification for the implementation of a 12.5% affordable housing requirement within the new district. August 12, 2024, the planning board held an outreach meeting to present the draft district and solicit input regarding that proposal, also to inquire if there were any other locations that might be better suited. A few other locations were mentioned, but the consensus amongst the board was that while other locations were mentioned, the conversation kept going back to the suitability of the proposed district. The board confirmed the choice of the proposed district at their following meeting on the 13th. September 24 of this year, the planning board held a public hearing on the proposed, on the proposal and voted to recommend the bylaw, adoption of this bylaw amendment and amended amendment, four to one. The board also voted to separate out a portion of the bylaw into a separate article, which will be next, but there'll be a motion to pass over that. So while these dates are highlighted for tonight, the planning board has been continuously discussing this issue since the beginning of 2023. The proposed district. The proposed district is located on Route 140, which is approximately 14.3 acres. It's partly located on the approved governor's landing development site. Some of the considerations for choosing this location for a district include the following. Located mostly on the governor's planning development site, proposed, which is proposed and permitted for 127 units separately of this bylaw, that was a separate application went before both planning board and zoning board. So the selected site will already be in a location that has been slated for development, meaning it won't create any additional development sites. The site has been extensively reviewed for development through the planning board and zoning board. The site is proposed, is the proposed terminus for the extension of sewer and water currently. The town received $3.6 million through the Housing Works Infrastructure Grant Program to extend sewer and water to the site in 2023. Not locate, the proposed district is not located in a traditional neighborhood setting, meaning that it is located on a major route that is zoned for general business, commercial use. So while the proposed district is intended to comply with the zoning requirement for housing, the planning board maintained, has maintained a mixed-use component which will allow for the certain, for certain commercial uses to be used by right. The site is currently on vacant land, so it will not disrupt an established aesthetic. This consideration is more in relation to the potential increase impacts a new district that would have on other locations in town. As mentioned, it is located in a existing general business district, as you can see on the map. And this is the current zoning designation of the town, this is the current zoning map, so you see it circled in red, is the approximate location of the district, GB indicating general Some frequently asked questions. What is the unit requirement for Upton? Upton must provide a zoning district which will allow for at least 150 units. Do the units within new 40B developments count towards this requirement? No, 40B developments are separate from this requirement. When must the town complete 150 units? There is no requirement to build these units. It's just, it's just a zoning practice to zone for the potential of use. Where must, where must the town locate the district? Does it have to be near a train station? The town can choose where the district goes because the town does not currently have a train station. So because of that designation as an adjacent community, the town has the ability to decide where it goes. So it doesn't have to be like with other towns, it needs to be within a certain proximity to train stations and things like that. But because Upton does not, as stated, because Upton does not have a train station, we do not have to follow that rule. Is there a requirement, is there a requirement to make the units within the district affordable? No, but the town may choose to enact its own affordability requirement. Upton and the planning board is proposing within this amendment to include a 12.5 affordability requirement, and that will, I'll discuss more on that later, but that kicks in at eight units. Can there be mixed-use development? Yes, and that is proposed. Well, the development isn't proposed, but the ability for a mixed-use development to be proposed is included within the bylaw amendment. Will the 150 units count towards the town's 10% goal of affordable housing and enter into safe harbor status, potentially avoiding future 40B developments? No, this is a separate requirement which is required under a separate law. 40B is a separate part of MGL, not 40A, and this law has been enacted differently. So no, however, if constructed, the 12.5% I mentioned will be counted towards the town's subsidized housing inventory list, and that is the 10% goal that's named under 40B. Slide 7, next slide. Some additional components that have been added to the regulations include, as mentioned, mixed use to allow commercial and retail within the proposed development within the district will be allowed. Any affordable, any, any development providing eight or more units will have to dedicate 12.5% of the total units as affordable to be included in the town's 10% per MGL 40B, as I mentioned. This was the finding of the economic feasibility analysis that I mentioned earlier. In order for the state to approve any housing requirement within, excuse me, in order for the state to approve any affordable housing requirement within a new MBTA district, it must be accompanied by an economic feasibility analysis, which is basically what it sounds like. It basically studies the market conditions of Upton and surrounding areas to verify that yes, if the town were to institute this 12.5% requirement, it could be, a development could withstand that, basically, and it wouldn't, otherwise, it wouldn't become a prohibiting factor. So that's a requirement by the state. There will be a 2.5-story maximum building height, which is equal to that of a typical single-family home, so that new construction is within the scale of the existing community, the community, community Upton-wide, not necessarily that specific site, but Upton. There will be a maximum building coverage of 30% per parcel to prevent massing that is out of scale of the community. Any new development with four or more units will require site planning reviewed through the planning board. There will be a requirement for off-street parking and compliance with the town's MS4, Small Community Stormwater Permit, but there's also a requirement for outdoor common space for new residential units. And so the next slide, this is where I'll leave it. This is just, it shows the existing zoning map on the left, and that is the proposed district on the right for context.
Ms. Barry Farrell. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I just have some clarification I'm looking for. I'm sorry, this caught me off-guard, and my house is right next to all of this. Were butters not needed to be notified of this? We didn't have to notify butters on any of this? No.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
What is required is that it be advertised, and that's what, so an advertisement was taken out in telegram and gazette, seven, 14 and 77 days ahead of public meeting.
Kathy Robertson, about my address, 59 Fowler Street. Just a point of clarification, this is not a project, and a butter notification would be required if a project is proposed for that site. This is a zoning change, and the developer may choose to proceed or may choose not to proceed, may choose to proceed in two years, may choose to proceed in 40 years. At that time, a butters would be notified. And again, as Mike commented, there was a, this was noted, you know, the planning board had, ever since this law was passed, the planning board's been looking at this, and there was, you know, general outreach via the town website, the, you know, social media account about, you know, the input, the public input sessions, and, you know, and it was advertised. So, but the thing to remember is this is not a project. This is not a project. There may never be a project, and that's just an important element to remember.
Okay, and I just have two other quick questions. Some of these lots look like there's houses already on it.
You need to get closer, your mic is too low.
There are no... So there's no houses on any of these lots that you've, okay, okay. And you're also talking about Cobbler's Creek, it is not being added to?
Governor's Landing.
Governor's Landing, I'm sorry. Governor's Landing is not being added to? Is that correct?
Madam Moderator, I don't understand the question.
She's questioning the units of the governor's.
Correct. So we've approved so many units at Governor's Landing. Are you saying that no more than the approved lots? Or could there be more than was already approved? Or could there be more than was already approved?
It would be likely, very likely, in addition to. So, you know, I don't have the Governor's Landing development proposals to show tonight because that's not necessarily what is on for discussion, but the highlighted district you see here is basically the front of Governor's Landing site with the inclusion of, I believe it's Upton Trucking and Repair is the smaller parcel to the south there. But the remainder of the proposed district is basically the Governor's Landing site, which has been approved for 127 units of senior housing. 27 of those units are located within this proposed district. So the minimum requirement of 150 housing units, I mean, I don't know whether to subtract 27 or to add 2, I mean, it's, because it's all dependent upon a developer submitting engineered plans to show what can feasibly be proposed for any given site. But it would be, I suppose, it's hard to say if it's in addition to or subtracted from what is already proposed, but it's, I guess the best way to explain it is just that within the proposed district, that is already approved for 27 townhouse units through the Governor's Landing site. The remainder of the Governor's Landing site is 100 units. So, and that's to the west of that district, right to the left. And that is not included in this district at all because that involves the larger portion of the site that is not highlighted and read there. So, I'm sorry, that's a roundabout way of answering the question, so I can ask this.
Okay, so Governor's Landing could add like another units if he purchases more property. I just want to be able to get out of my driveway every morning, so I'm just curious how this is going to go. Thank you.
On the map, it's real hard to visualize without a landmark. Could someone mark where like the BFW is or the gas station so that it's easier to visualize?
So just, Madam Moderator, through you, in response to that question, you can see the Upton Center Business District on this map, so that's where all of the major downtown area is. When then you head out towards Milford, this is the area before you get to Kelly's, and it's on the, it's on the south side of 140, before you get to Kelly's. You know where the rug/truck place is on 140? That showed up on the other, if you could go back to the other map, you see one building there. There's one building right there, that's the rug/truck place on 140. The rest of this goes back towards the center of town there, that's all currently zoned general business, but through the Governor's Landing project, the ZBA has given them permission to put housing there already. So it will be, it has already been approved to have housing there. And again, there is no requirement that anyone ever does anything there. We just have to have the zone that can allow this to happen. Thank you.
Hello, Jamie Jankola at 55 Milford. I can see my parcel right at the top here. So I had a few questions, although after some discussion, it sounds like this is a zoning thing and not an expansion of a project. Just additional clarification, so the Governor's Landing, is this now red zone expanding what Governor's Landing was already proposing, or this is just a section that was proposed and is now new zoning laws that are proposed?
Yeah, Madam Moderator, Governor's Landing has not proposed anything as of today with regard to this. They would have to, should this be approved tonight, and the owners of the Governor's Landing site wanted to take advantage of the new zoning, they would have to submit brand-new plans to the planning board for the planning board's review and approval of that, of any new developments. This is not, while this is not, this does not reflect any impending development, right? It reflects the requirement of the state on the 177 municipalities that are deemed to be MBTA communities to go through the practice of zoning a district for multifamily, as of right. But, yeah, it does not reflect a current proposal before the planning board or submitted to my office currently. I don't have any.
Okay, thank you. Won't have any more questions about Governor's Landing. So, a question on how MBTA wants us to use this, would this proposition encourage any future public transport in this particular area?
So although this is called the MBTA Communities Act, it really is an act about increasing the availability of housing in the state as far as I can tell. There is no future plan for MBTA service to Upton. There is no requirement that this be close to the MBTA station. If we have an MBTA station, then it would, then it would be obviously beneficial for it to be possible to access it. We don't. So, no, there's not going to be a future MBTA station here.
Hi, Lori Woden, 700 St. I'm going to try and clarify the numbers because I think people are still a little bit confused about this. And although it's just a zone, we know who owns the land, so as soon as the zone gets created, it's the person who has Governor's Landing who's planning to build the 27 units on that parcel. They'll be able to submit something. And I thought the most they could submit was for 150, but what now that I saw in the slideshow, it sounds like it could be 215, and when they say the handout, it sounds like it could be 328 units. So I want to talk about what's there now and what's being proposed and the impact it's going to have. I'm one of the administrators of Sustainable Upton, and so we think a lot about sustainability, traffic, air quality, congestion, equality of life. That's what I'd like to address today. So I'm speaking for myself and also for Sustainable Upton. It's my understanding that the intention of the MBTA Community Building Initiative is to provide housing in towns beside towns with commuter train stops. This is to encourage people to take the train, minimizing car travel, whose fossil fuel emissions contribute to global temperature rise. I also recognize that in the interest of preserving open space, a goal Upton has always expressed, it is important to build housing near where housing already exists and near to services. At the same time, we don't want to add to global warming by increasing traffic, requiring cars to emit more fossil fuel emissions by idling endlessly in traffic. The number of cars being added to our narrow streets with this proposal, we believe, is not sustainable. Right now, in morning and afternoon rush hour, a car may sit through two or three light changes at the corner of Maple Ave and Route 140, going north and south and east and west. Now, because of the already approved 128 units of Governor's Landing and the 60 units behind Tickerin Funeral Home on Main Street at two cars per unit, as we are told by the state to consider, we will already be adding 374 new cars. That is definite. If we put the MBTA community downtown, instead of 374 cars, we will be adding 620 more cars to our roads. Now, if it's 215 instead of 150, there's a couple hundred more, and it's 328, we're getting up there a thousand more cars to our roads. It's going to double and triple what we already have, and you know what the traffic is like. If you commute, you know it often takes 30 to 45 minutes to even get to Route 495. With 374 more cars, imagine the added time, and with 620 or 900-something, it'll be absolutely impossible. How many of you commute? How many of your neighbors commute? How many of your children commute? Can you imagine the backup and then all the traffic lights and then with the rotary? There's so much land to develop after we shut water and sewer up to Route 140 that this is only the beginning. In years to come, people will talk about how we ruined our beautiful little town by growing the downtown too quickly. Let me explain. So Governor's Landing, I can show you, that strip and the 100 units for over 55 is that big rectangle on the left.
Lori, you can't be heard.
Yes, get a safe microphone, please. That big rectangle on the left is where the 100 over 55 units are going to go, and the red area is where 27 units are going to go. If this gets approved, in that area, I had thought there'd be 150 units, and that's what brought us to 620 cars. But now they're saying it could be 215 or maybe 328, so just figure two more cars per unit, and you can see how quickly it adds up. So what we already have is 127 units going there, or 254 cars. If you put 150 MBTA community down there, that makes, instead of 127, 250 units or 500 cars coming out of there at morning rush hour and trying to get back in there at night, you can imagine that there'll have to be a lot. Also, think of the Amazon trucks and the UPS trucks that are going to be going in and out of there all day long. We have to think about that if we want to be smart about planning. I think one of the problems is, we've been asked to do this by the state, and we don't have time to do a lot of planning. Our strategic long-term plan is 20 years old, and we need to be doing that kind of planning, or we're going to blow it like a lot of towns around us have done. We also know that across the street from the new refurbished Imperial Gas, that property has just been bought up. And we had hoped that they were going to put a bank there, but now we understand that Mr. Lowres is planning to put multifamily housing there too, and he's the one who's done the 40B project. We don't know how many units are going to go there, we don't know how many cars are going to go there. All these developments, if people own the land, they can do whatever they want. They have to go to the planning board, but essentially, they're going to be able to build their property. The only development we have any control over is this MBTA community. So I would like to strongly suggest that we take the time that we have available to us. Our zone is not required to be to Boston for a whole nother year, till December 2025. And if we could take the time and really see what's happening with everything else, really assess what the best place is, that would be smart. The intention of the law is to build housing that gets people to want to take the train. They intend it to be at the edge of towns that is adjacent to the towns with the MTA. That's what they expect. It's not what they're requiring, but it's what they expect. One parcel of land, I'm not saying it's perfect, but on East Street, there are several parcels of land that could possibly be used, and it's at the very end, right at the Hockington Line, so the impact would be minimal on our town. Right now, if this development goes downtown, in order to get to 495, the people are going to be going down Glenview, they're going to all be going up Christian Hill, they're going to be going along Prospect, tapped Walnut, all the way across East Street. If it's at the end, nobody even goes on East Street, all they do is go over the Hockington Line, hop on the highway, get down to the Westboro train or the Grafton train or the Southboro train, they can go to Price Chopper easily. That's the kind of thing we're looking to do. We're looking to control fossil fuel emissions. So I hope you will consider that we should take the time available to us. I think this should be done at May Town Meeting, which many more people come to. This is a town meeting that's supposed to be for wrapping up bills at the end of the year. Nobody, we talked to a lot of people, and nobody knew about it. It's going to be the biggest change that ever happened to this town, and almost nobody knows. So I hope we'll take the time that's available to us and really think this through and discover if there aren't better places to put it.
Excuse me, Margaret Carroll, 48 Oak Tribe. I just wanted to address the question of the 38 units, the 215 units, the 150 units. We are required by the state law to have a proposal that would allow for at least 150 units. That, there's also a requirement for a minimum number of units per acre, and that is at least 15 units per acre. This strip of land is a little over 15 acres, which brought the number higher. Originally, there are other numbers out there, including 328, and that would require much larger buildings, much taller buildings, so we put in the maximum of 215 to say that no, it can't go that high. The reality is, and believe me, I've been dealing with this particular site since about 2003, I think was the first time we had a proposal on this site. There is wetland in there, there's going to have to be road structure, infrastructure. They're not going to be able to cram 15 units per acre in there because there are going to be things that get in the way, like the wetlands, like the need for infrastructure. But we did, we did put that maximum in in order to prevent anyone from trying to come in with, you know, four or five-story buildings. We also did put in the limit on the number of stories on buildings as an attempt to hold down the number of units that are proposed to us. Thank you.
Lindsay Barker from 101 High Street. I feel that the current proposed zoning district would actually increase traffic on my street, High Street, as well as many other surrounding streets, such as allowing traffic to find a new route to get to 495. 374 to 620 more new cars in the local area to allow for the MBTA commuting people is going to also decrease our local air quality. We should also consider the future plans of our upcoming town grocery in the center of the town. This may also help to reduce our small-town charm and also reduce foot traffic if we allow for this building district to happen.
Kathy Taylor, 14 Sunny Street. I listened carefully to the YouTube with the town planner, and he said that the MBTA law is intended to create new housing within state for transit-oriented development. We have train stations in Westborough, Grafton, Ashland, and Franklin. So we need cars closer to the highway to get them there. Up Westborough Road, up by East Street, let's get them close to 495 because we know that's where everybody's going. Some concern about input from citizens, I'm curious, how many citizens were at that mid-August meeting? What was the input? I mean, how many citizens went to that August meeting and?
It was widely advertised. I think mid-August is a tough time to get people gathered to something as important as this. And the lack of information was really rather alarming.
Point of order relative to this motion here on the floor.
Yes, you must keep that within the scope. How they conducted their outreach is not within the scope of this.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Well, I think community involvement is important, and our opinion is...
They documented everything that they did.
I know, documented, it sounds good, but nobody showed up in August, the people were elsewhere.
I'm sorry, because that is outside the scope.
So the historic district has 200 houses in it. With Governor's Landing with 127 and with the 40B, 60, you've almost doubled the historic district downtown. Adding 150 now, I'm hearing, could be a lot more because, I mean, we have at least 150. I'm concerned with density. We all know we need more housing in town. I would just suggest that we spread it out a little bit. Doubling the amount of housing units downtown with what we have now, and then throwing on 150-plus units on top of that. I don't know whether a traffic study was done, but for Governor's Landing, there were a lot of concerns brought up with 127 units, double those cars all going into 140 and back. And so we've gone from 127 units, they're up to 250. So just because, just because Governor's Landing went through all of the necessary things to do for zoning for 127 units, I'm not sure that translates to 250. I would like to ask people that, we have another year to work on this. I'm not sure that, I would like to see that we get some more time to work on this, or we have some time.
I think a brief summary circle, and I'd appreciate if you'd tell me if I am getting outside of the article, kill my remarks. A few things, both today and in the recent past, disturb me. Suggestion that we take more time. We've taken two and a half years since the select board first heard about the MBTA community set and had an open meeting in April 2025. Saturn had an open meeting in April 2022. As to community involvement, well, there was a community forum on housing on March 16, 2023. A lot of people went there, pore over zoning maps. We identified areas that would be good for more housing in response to the request of the town on housing up to survey. I can tell you, East Street is not one of them. People who are proposing new areas suddenly, where have you been? These areas for the rezoning have been discussed at nausea and open meetings, not just in August, but also in September. There was an open meeting held by the planning board. Anyone could have gone to that. I'm going to specifically address East Street for two reasons. One is I declare that Cranberry Circle is adjacent to East Street. And I believe they're talking about the lot that used to be part of the Amara Farm. Frankly, that's absurd. First of all, the rest of East Street is School Street in Hockington. You better tell Hockington about that because it's barely wide enough for two cars. It can't be wide enough because as I've seen it, we're looking to the EPW Director of Hockton. The Alfonso Company tried to put a 12-house lot there over several years and just have failed because they just can't fit even 12 houses into that spot and entrance road or the wetland and so on that surround it. So that really is just something that's come out of nowhere for a piece of land. It's inappropriate, speaking as a local resident. But speaking as a resident of the town, part of the goal of its communities is to bring young, vigorous families who need their first houses, I want them to identify with the town of Upton. You don't do that by putting them literally on the town line, which is where the East Street lot is. I want these people to be focused into Upton so they can provide their inputs, their energy, their small businesses that they're going to start, the people they're going to employ, their small businesses. The children, they identify with the school within walking distance of the community center. Isn't that a great way of having a town that finally has a center with people vibrant and living within it, encouraging small businesses to address them, rather than have them go straight to the Starbucks, the Price Chopper? We need these young people, we need these young families, part of Upton, not part of its boundaries. Thank you.
Hi, Bishu Lazar from 10 Rockdale Little Circle. Lori said a lot of the things, and I just wanted to reiterate that I agree with her on. And that is, I don't want to go back over those facts, but 600 additional cars on our streets is going to have a huge impact on town, especially when there's other lots in the area where more multifamily housing is going to be built. For example, the lot across from Imperial Gas. So more cars, more students, more traffic, more pollution, really close to town. So I understand that we don't need to make a decision on this until the end of next year. So why are we bringing this up in a November town meeting, which is much less well-attended than the ATM in May? And I hope we can vote no on this until we can take the time to decide if it's the best location for our town or if we'd be better off adding a location that's on the edge of towns that have commuter rails, such as Westboro, Grafton, or the east side of town with access to Southboro and Ashland stations. And just for the record, I just learned about all this development in the last few days and also polled all my neighbors and friends since we have this group list. And almost everyone was largely unaware of any of these developments going to town. Thank you.
I just want to quickly address several of the issues that have been brought up. Kathy Robertson, 59 Fowler Street. First, the MBTA community is actually driving people to MBTA rail stations. We have discussed this and, you know, my opinion, naming this MBTA community, MBTA district and tying it to a train station does the program a disservice. What the purpose of this program was, was to create more housing in Massachusetts because of the demand for housing. And Upton, less than 10% of the people work in Boston and would be taking a train station and would be taking a train into Boston. That's the max. I go into Boston a couple of times a month. Taking the train in would more than double my time during rush hour of getting to my destinations in Boston. The MBTA is not a feasible alternative. So by putting this on East Street as proposed, it's not going to, you know, these people who are living there will be going to Worcester, Shrewsbury, Providence, and other locations. Most of them will not be going into Boston. So I did want to make that point. And I also did want to reference, there's been a lot of talk about this again, as it's a project. People have been talking about number of cars, number of houses. We don't know. There is a strong possibility, or there's a possibility that a lot less houses will be built or units will be built. There's a possibility that units won't be built at all. This is a zoning issue. From here, it still has to go through the process. It has to go through engineering. It has to go through design. It has to go through conservation and levels. It has to go through the process. This is not saying that we are going to build X amount of units at this site. This is saying that we are zoning it so that this can be if people can do it. Thank you.
William Andrews, 84 High Street. Madam Moderator, I'd like to move the question.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to move the question. Moving the question requires two-thirds of vote. It cannot be debated or discussed. All those in favor of moving the question and ending debate on this. All those opposed to moving the question. I declare the motion carried by the required two-thirds vote. Article 25. All those in favor, please raise your green card.
One more, Madam Moderator. Did you say two-thirds vote?
No, two-thirds is required when we move the question. This is a simple majority. All those in favor of Article 25, please raise your green card. All those opposed, I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article 26. I do need a motion to pass over. I was informed that Article 26 is passing.
Kathy Robertson, 59 Fowler Street. I move that the town pass over Article 26.
All those in favor of passing over Article 26. This does require a two-thirds majority. All those opposed, please raise your red card. I declare the motion as carried by the required two-thirds vote. Article 27. Okay, Kathy Robertson again, 59 Fowler Street. I move that the town votes to amend the town of Upton zoning bylaws by amending the town of Upton zoning bylaw section 30-7.6. It says three apartments and section 300-10-1 definitions with additions indicated by underlining, deletions indicated by strike through, and to authorize a town clerk to make any necessary non-substantive corrections, including renumbering to incorporate these changes into the zoning bylaws as printed in the Article 24 handout provided at town meeting. Michael.
I'll now have a presentation from the representative.
I swear one of these times I'll get up and introduce an article that the state isn't making you do. So slide one, so accessory dwelling units. This slide basically just contains most of the information that you need to know about this article. Accessory apartment, as defined in your bylaw currently is shown as stricken because that would be replaced with accessory dwelling unit. And so I'll just read through that definition quickly so we all have a good understanding of it. Accessory dwelling unit, as will be newly defined in this bylaw amendment, but is also defined, this is the state's definition of accessory dwelling unit. A self-contained housing unit inclusive of sleeping, cooking, sanitary facilities on the same lot as a principal dwelling, subject to otherwise applicable dimensions and parking requirements that, one, maintain separate entrance, either directly from the outside or through an entry hall or corridor shared with the principal dwelling unit. A principal dwelling sufficient to meet the requirements of the State Building Code for Safe Egress. Two, is not larger than, is not larger in gross floor area than half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. Three, is subject to additional restrictions as may be imposed by the municipality, including but not limited to size restrictions, size restrictions and restrictions or provisions regarding short-term rental as defined in that chapter. So in August of this year, the Healey administration signed into law the Affordable Homes Act. Part of that legislative package included a change to MGL 40A, which more clearly defined accessory dwelling unit, which I just provided the definition of, and made it so that accessory dwelling units are allowed by right within all cities and towns in the state. That law concerning accessory dwelling units is set to go into effect in February 2025, prior to our annual town meeting. This proposed bylaw amendment just seeks to gain compliance with that new state law. So by right, so I said accessory dwelling units would be allowed by right. By right means no special approvals will be required. It will only require building permits. Formally referred to as accessory apartments, as I just showed in our current zoning bylaw. 300-7.6, what has changed? The definition of an ADU has been added in place of accessory apartment, as we saw on the last slide, previously capped at 1,000 square feet. An ADU is now restricted to 900 square feet or 50% of the living area. Only allowed by right in residential zones. Your residential zones are the agricultural residential, the single-family residential, sub-A, sub-B, sub-C, and sub-D. Not, accessory dwelling units will now be allowed by special permit in your commercial industrial district, general business district, in the UCB Upton Center Business District. This is remaining unchanged from the existing bylaw. The planning board felt it was important to maintain that special permit option within your commercial districts because that is what is currently the law. So as you might be familiar, especially in your CNI district, that incorporates a large portion of West Upton. There are existing established single-family residential neighborhoods in that district. The planning board wanted to maintain their ability as individual homes to be able to apply for the special permit to include an accessory dwelling unit. So that is unchanged. But what is changing is within the residential districts, it will be allowed by right. There will be, adequate parking will be required for all new units. All other bylaws requiring setbacks and use will apply. Board of Health still has jurisdiction over septic. And building still has jurisdiction over building code. Fire still has jurisdiction over fire code. So again, this is reflective of that state law that I briefly went over, which is set to go into effect in February 2025.
Is there any other discussion on this motion? I'm seeing a lot of shaking heads saying no. All those, this does require a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, raise your red cards. I declare the motion as carried by the required two-thirds majority. I want to thank you all for coming. Thank you for your patience with me. I am absolutely honored to have been here tonight. I've only been the moderator in Grafton since 2021. And in that time, every single town meeting that I had to oversee has had a change. 2021 football field, first day of the heat wave, almost got decapitated by the pop-up tent that came loose and clung across the stage. Moved inside in the fall of '21. We had to take off chairs so everyone could be separate. We had hand sanitizers. We had masks. It was crazy. Moved into the spring of '22, easing up on that. We didn't have masks. People were still separate. There was a section for people who wanted to be separate. Every single town meeting that I've overseen has had a unique set of adventures and challenges. In our last town meeting, I thought, I've got this. I've been doing this for a while now. And then Dave asked me to come here tonight to oversee your town meeting. So thank you for continuing on the streets. And I will now entertain a motion to dissolve. First, Madam Moderator, Dave Leifer goes you a big one. And I hope that you remember that. My name is Kathy Robertson, 59 Fowler Street. And I move to close the warrant under 2024 special town meeting and adjourn the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good night.
Thank you very much.